You still working?
Yeah.
Nice and cool at your place.
Yeah, it's, it's not bad.
I know that's been said a lot.
Window air conditioners, but, but uh.
That's just like.
I mean, even up there, it hit ninety, you know, you know, but it wasn't.
It's harsh.
I don't know. I don't think it's bad. It's, it's, I don't think it was really that humid. I think.
No, it wasn't.
The humidity makes it, this one really makes it. Nah, don't be cool.
So I guess we will get started there.
I, I heard they have a lot.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Um, welcome to the June planning board meeting and we'll open by Holly. Call roll, please.
Uh Chairman Mayhood.
Here.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mrs. Nestro.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Winterman, Noel.
Haven't heard from him.
Uh, Mr. Groth.
There.
Uh, Mr. Youth.
He's not feeling well tonight, so he will not be here.
And Vice Chair McCumsky.
Thank you.
In addition, we have the Merzkes and Mr. Haas and Darla McDonald. If you stand and salute the flag with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, we have agendas over there if you're interested. Um, we have a privilege of the floor. Is there anything anyone would like to bring up at this point that's not on the agenda? At the second privilege of the floor, we're going to meet Darla McDonald back there. I passed out a letter on your table. She's interested in joining us potentially as a planning board member, but we'll handle that at the last, the second privilege of the floor. Okay, um. So at this point, we're not going to do the public hearings. We will do the public hearings as we start the review for each of the applications, but they are listed on the agenda. The next item is approval of the minutes of the May nineteenth meeting. Are there any corrections? Okay, I have one, um, two, actually. In those who were present, you said Mr. Groth was present. Mr. Groth.
Okay.
And later you say Mr. Groth was absent. He was absent. So he was not present with us. You must have cut and paste.
Yeah.
Okay, and uh, it didn't get in the minutes. I'm not sure it really needs to, but after the privilege of the floor, we held two public hearings, the public, or we listed them there on the, on the minutes. You know, normally we list them on the minutes and then we open them actually when we do the review. So I'm not sure it needs to be in the minutes. Um, it wasn't on your agenda either. I noticed that I didn't put it on the agenda, so. On the May meeting, so. At the May meeting.
Oh.
Those are the minutes. Uh, I do have a copy of them if you're interested. Any other corrections? I've been looking for this.
Nope.
Oh. All right, then I guess if this, uh, see normally we have public hearing one, public hearing two, and then we actually open them there, so. Can take that one if you'd like to. Okay. So I'll have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
I'll make a motion.
Caitlin the second.
Say.
Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll go into the reports, um, as we usually do. Town board meeting, the town, Canada's town board met June ninth. Um, not a whole lot going on. They did have a extensive report from the highway department. Um, they've been very busy around town. You've probably seen them. Um, they're doing, continuing to do pre- preparation work on Canada ice hill road. They're cutting trees, they're filling potholes, and they're actually going to do some additional work next year, but they're preparing that road for that, and it's helping by getting those potholes filled. Um, roadside mowing, nearly done with. At that time, it was nearly done with the first pass. They actually signed on Canada ice lake road this morning, so he started second row, second round. They purchased a new roadside mower. The one we have apparently is not very reliable, and it's in a shop for being outfitted to be able to use. Looking forward to getting that midsummer. Johnson Hill Road, if you've been down there, they did a pretty extensive patch. It's still patching, although it's a little smoother than just patching. And his, his plan is later this year to actually re redo that whole road, use the grinder to grind up the existing pavement and put in a a bed, a foundation, and then a blacktop on top of that. So he's planning on getting that done before fall. Um, the equipment trailer that they use to move things around town needs replacing. They were looking into purchasing a used one from the Bloomfield, town of Bloomfield, and they discussed that, didn't decide on buying it or not. And they have hired a new uh, MEO for the highway department, uh, new employee. His name is Eric. I did not catch his second name, his last name. So.
Please show.
Whoever it was that recently retired, one of them recently retired and, and they had several applicants actually, and they hired Jeremy, the highway superintendent's very happy with him as of this state. So that was the major report, um, Honeye Lake Watershed Task Force. Um, Terry reported there was a hundred and eighty percent more rain for the month of May than is normal. And boat cleaning stations have been installed at the Honeye Lake launch. That was pretty much it. There were really no other reports of significance, um. They commented about the Honeye Lake Sewer District. It's in need of repair and upgrading. And uh, the town would like to get a grant from the state to help fund that. However, for this, for the grant to be granted, uh, the state requires uh, income, average income levels, because based on the average income level, it'll determine your eligibility for a grant. Well, apparently they sent out some postcards and they're not getting good response. Not many people are actually willing to share their income level. The big picture is if they do, it may help the town and help them ultimately, because only the people that live in the sewer district pay for the sewer district, not, not the rest of the town. So, uh, but I can, personally, I can understand a little bit their reluctance. I'm not sure what information, how detailed they want it, but um, if they would step up as a, as a group and get enough responses, they might be able to reduce the cost to the town. Other than that, um, they've, Ontario County Highway has informed us that they're going to be reconstructing County Road thirty-seven with new pavement from Canada ice hill road corner here around uh, to Middle Road, and it's going to be an extensive one where they grind up and put new culverts in, and there is a kind of a dip that is created there every winter. It's pretty severe, so they're pretty gonna fix that too. Uh, but that's not going to be for at least one year, possibly two. I don't know why they're alerting us now. Um, and that was pretty much it. Any questions on the town meeting?
Hey.
Did you get it?
That was June ninth.
Who's your ass done?
You're welcome. County Planning Board, any?
The planning board did not meet. June. Substantive occasion.
Okay.
You bet. No, I went to. Oh.
He deserves it. He deserves it. All right, um, zoning board, the zoning board did meet uh two weeks ago. They had two applications. Um, one was for a variance for a deck, and one was for a variance for a porch. In fact, it's the Merzkes here. We're going to talk about that when we get to their application. Code enforcement included the report from the CEO. If you have any questions on that, contact Joe Miller directly. And the comprehensive plan, got anything to share with us?
Uh, yeah, we had our public engagement meeting, um, in June. That was well attended. There will be um, the twelfth.
Twelve?
I believe so.
Yeah.
It's been a bit of a blur, but I'm pretty sure we were here on the twelfth. Um, and then we will have our public hearing at the August town board meeting. That will be August eleventh. Our first of two public hearings.
Do you expect the second one to follow on the following month?
It'll be based on how much feedback we get from the town board, um, and it'll need to go through seeker and to county planning before the second public hearing where it'll be officially adopted.
We hope.
We know.
Yeah.
It was a good, uh, good present, great presentation of some of the highlights and the work they'd done. It was very, very well received, I thought.
Thank you.
Appreciated that.
And that recording will be available um, on the website as well.
There are questions that, uh, then we will.
You?
Or a few questions. Pretty much, to me, it showed that people don't understand what a comprehensive plan is. They were asking specific questions about, well, what are, what are the dollar amounts and all that? And a comprehensive plan is a high level document that gives guidance to the town. It doesn't get down to that, but there were a couple of other questions and showed some, some local interest, so that was good. They had a lot of nice charts. You guys that didn't come really missed a good presentation. All right, thank you. Excuse me, and uh, the town board did uh, vote on a resolution of recognition for Caitlin and the team, and I, uh, Tom Clark printed one out and given it to Caitlin tonight, so.
Yeah, we, they had made a motion directing you um, to officially have us start that process back in uh, early twenty twenty-four, I believe it was, but we just wanted to have a formal resolution for, um, for our records and for our progress, to make sure we had all our ducks in a row.
Yep. And it was also a little bit of a recognition also for the work that's been done, so. Okay, any other questions for Caitlin?
Where will that end up residing? Will it be part of this book or?
What's it?
Um, the resolution, it'll be part of the comprehensive plan.
Included in the package.
Yep.
Does it formalize this? Anything else? All right, we'll move to old business. I did receive the final site plan map for the site plan application that we reviewed at the last meeting. Where Gary and Gina Palmer at Joe Bear Drive, they provided the site plan map with the corrections that we had asked for. Were a couple of things missing on the uh, preliminary plot or map that they gave us. And uh, they had included all of those, so I signed off on it and they are ready to go. They were ready to get their building permits to, to do their remodeling. New business. Okay, first, first of two applications. The first one is we want to review the site plan application of James and Christine Merzke for property at fifty-seven thirteen Sunset Drive, Canada ice, New York. So the process here is the first thing we will do is uh, we will open a public hearing by motion.
Make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second. Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay. And then what are, what we do is we will open, we, we call a preliminary review of the application by motion.
Yeah.
Hmm? Certainly.
What uh?
Is it on the detail of the application?
On the application itself.
Okay, well, we're going to open by motion, we're going to open the review, and then you can ask your question. All right, thank you, Caroline. Birch second, all in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, so let me just uh, talk through this as, as I, as I understand it, and the Merzkes are here, and then if your question hasn't been answered.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, go ahead.
I, uh, does this require a site plan?
Good question, because they live in the Honeye Lake Shore District. They're uh, new construction of more than eight hundred square feet.
It's not what it says here on. I, I seen, it looks like it's a remodel.
It's a, it's a rebuild. It's the rebuilding on the, they're going to tear down what's there using the exact same footprint except for the porch. They're going to rebuild using the exact same footprint. So it is the same.
It's a complete tear down?
Uh, it's almost a hundred percent, right?
The, the main part, that the front part toward the lake that is on Millers, um, that is a complete tear down uh, with some uh, foundation underneath that. Taxi parts near the road will probably be, have to go through and see how much we need to, there, down, but uh, so there is a substantial tear down.
Right.
I just look for the, for reading it, it just seems like.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what we put on the back of the application.
That's what it says on. And that might have secret.
Okay, we can, we can clarify that when we get to the secret. We can add it, a little real clarification. Yeah, okay, good question.
And if it was a remodel, then I didn't see the need for site planning. That was my base.
Okay, yeah, right. Uh, CEO determined that it required a site.
Okay.
He's the one that didn't.
From just reading.
He interprets in the code.
You gotta scratch your head and say why.
Right. Good question. We'll clarify that when we get to that.
Thanks.
Good. All right, so I do have a copy of their, you know, the building plans, sketches of what they're going to do if anyone's interested. But the simplest thing is, um, if you look at the where is it? You look at the hand drawing, okay? Uh, this is the preliminary site plan map. Okay, and all it does is it shows the existing structure with a little bit of addition on the, if you're holding this this way. The addition is the, the expansion away from the original footprint is what's shown in the hash marks, okay? On that. I think it's in red, isn't it, on yours?
Not in ours.
I, I can white, put red in some and black white in some, okay, but it's the hash mark. So doing that, if you look at the survey map that we use kind of as a guide here. It looks a little bit of.
Yeah.
We're in this process of getting that correct.
I was confused by that.
Yeah, yes, it is.
They didn't notice.
We didn't notice that at closing, um, seven years ago, but um, yeah. We're good. We were in the wrong place, absolutely.
So, yeah. So if, if, I think I gave one of these to each of you. This is the expansion of their existing survey map, which kind of acts as our preliminary site map, okay, and um, the shaded area shows their existing property.
Just kind of wondering, I was, I was kind of wondering about this.
Yeah, it's what? Yeah, it says Canisius Lake, and you know, they, they already determined that, uh, that's an error on the original survey, which was made by uh, McGraw and McGraw. That's when they made, their existing survey map is dated in uh, twenty nineteen, yep. So that's one thing that they, that, that will be. They can correct that at some point. All they, all it's due to us is a site plan map, so they're going to, and they understand they're going to need to have, provide a site plan map. So the thing, the reason they needed a variance was by expanding the porch, they violated the side setback. Side setback regulation is ten feet and they came out with eight feet. So they did apply to the zoning board of appeals or a two-foot variance, and that was granted at the June eleventh meeting of the zoning board. They gave us a, gave us a receipt to say they granted that variance, so that removed that as an issue, so we don't have to deal with that. All of the other dimensional requirements are met, all the other setbacks, okay? So once we get into it, we will review some of the uh, general site plan uh, requirements, but that's basically the project. So are there any, and it gave you a map of, of where the property is, the expansion of that. And I think that's all we gave. So are there any other questions about what the, what the application is? So based on the uh, uh, information, there are no easements that are on your property? Is that correct?
You know, just the sewer.
Just the sewer, okay, and water. So on your site plan map, you're going to, you will need to show the water connection. A sewer connection and that easement has to be highlighted on your, on your site plan map. The other thing that's not really clear here is where the driveway is. To access this off Sunset Drive, so that will have to be on your site plan map too, a sketch of the driveway, where the driveway cut is.
Okay.
Okay.
There, yeah, there is no driveway cut on the lakeside. The um, the garage is across Sunset.
There's none on the lakeside, then that's, that's not really part of the, the site, so I guess.
There's no driveway access to this garage that's right behind?
There is, there is, yes, there is.
There's no driveway?
To the garage.
Yeah.
On the opposite side of Sunset, there is.
Well, you show a garage on the lakeside here, on the west side of your house.
That is the former, the former garage. That is actually part of the structure now, and so that is actually part of our cottage.
It's bedroom.
Yeah.
It's, okay, so it's not a garage, so you're saying on your site plan map, that needs to be clarified that that's, that's.
Okay.
So the only driveway is on the west side of the property off Sunset Drive.
So the garage is part of the tear down and remodel?
It's part of the remodel, yes.
But that setback is, doesn't need a variance?
No, because it's existing.
Okay.
If, if it was new.
The porch does, okay. Okay.
It's existing footprint, so there were no other, according to Joe, or, you know, I talked over with Joe, the CEO.
Okay.
Said the same footprint other than the porch, not need to retrofit to existing zoning laws, which would be a setback.
Okay.
Um, are there any other utilities on the property? Is there an old well or an old septic system or anything like that?
There's an old well, um, on the kind of roadside.
Do you use it at all? Is it in service? Does that have to be on the site map if it's not in service?
If it exists.
Yeah, yeah.
If you know where it is, it's a good thing to put on the map.
Yes.
For future reference.
Just a utility pole on your property or not? Um, it's kind of between us and our neighbors right on Sunset Drive.
Check here, what else should be on that map? Okay. So in our code, it shows what's the requirements on the maps on zoning one twenty dash one eighteen. Title of the project, so in, in the code, section, chapter one twenty, section one eighteen shows the detail of what has to be on that site plan map, okay? I'm just going to read down through, not everyone applies, okay? But basically it says what we need is an area map showing the parcel, tax map number, all properties, roads and easements, boundaries, internal road pattern, if there is one, location of all existing proposed structures, current and future use. Contours of twenty feet or less. Separate drainage, well, we're going to talk about the drainage report, so don't know that we need a separate report for that. Uh, water supply and sewage that's covered because you're connected to Publix. Intended use, you're going to live there full time or is it still going to be seasonal?
Currently, it's going to be seasonal, but the idea is to make it so we could live there full time.
Oh, okay. And so those are, those are the key things that should show up on site plan map. Any other questions? And I, I admit, this is kind of a very rough site plan map, but kind of at the last minute. And I wanted to get it on the agenda for this month, so I accepted this as the site plan, since it's the same footprint. That's why we did it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I sent him a note at like six o'clock. I'm going to need a map, and it turned out that uh, Stephanie uh, was here from the zoning board, and she said, oh, I've got the map that we use for zoning variants. Would that do? And so a few minutes later, I wrote him back, so he can use that, so. Okay. So the only, so if we look at the application, it's a site plan. They've paid the fee of thirty-five dollars, got their name and address. They live in Honeye Falls. Site address is Sunset Drive, tax map number, total site area point eight two five two. Proposed use residential, single-family living space, current use is the same. Character surrounding land, seasonal and year-round cottages and homes on the lake. Turn it over, the proposed use, this is really the description of what it is we're doing. And so uh, we've written primary use is residential, single-family dwelling, square footage about eleven hundred, twenty-one story structure. Um, could amend that by saying uh, tear down existing structure, rebuild on same footprint. That, clarify things? Okay. I'll write that and I'll have you initial it, okay, to show that you, we've amended the uh, application. Uh, I'll say demolish, not tear down. Hi, Rich.
Hello, sorry, I'm late.
Glad you could make it. Extension of the porch. So what I've written is uh, demolish existing structure, rebuild on existing footprint with the, with the extension of a lakeside porch. Okay, I'll have them initial that as we end up here. Uh, I see, I didn't even sign it. I did sign the original, but the one I, I sent out for you, I didn't sign, but I did sign the original. Any questions or interest on the application itself? So at this point, uh, we haven't really raised any, any new issues. I would, I would entertain a motion to grant preliminary approval to the site plan.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, sir, second, Steve Groth. Last chance, any other questions? All in favor? All in favor, aye, aye, opposed, okay. That's preliminary review and, and approval. So at this point, the process is we review the environmental assessment form. And so, this is the list of twenty some questions. So let's look at it first of all, um.
That motion to grant.
Preliminary approval.
And both.
No. Oh. We're going to close it. I guess we have to close it. We have to prove, no, we have to close the preliminary review by motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second, to close the preliminary review.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Close preliminary. Now we go back to this seeker environmental file review form. Uh, name of the action is a site plan, address. And, uh, I will, I will amend this description as well, so it matches what's on the application form. So having looked down through part one, these questions. Um, one question I would ask is, uh. Well. Any other, anybody have questions? I guess I'll give.
Well, number seven should be checked now, right?
Correct. Number seven says, is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it adjoining the state listed critical environmental area? And the answer is no, it's, you're not in any critical environmental area. So have you initial that? I'll check it. No.
They were a couple weeks.
And, uh, number thirteen, since we're going down the ones that haven't been checked. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated? Yeah, and so the answer is yes, because you're on Honeyeye Lake, even though your survey says Canisius. So that's a yes, and it's, it is a water body, it's not a wetland, but we'll have to say yes on that. And initial. And if yes, identify it, it's Honeyeye Lake.
And thirteen B.
Uh, thirteen B is, no, we're not approaching. So we have three initials on that. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, when the proposed action creates stormwater discharge, you become, follow from that sources.
Okay, so this is a question, is how are you going to handle rainwater, the runoff from rainwater? So this is where you tell us what your stormwater management plan is. What are you going to have?
We will have gutters and downspouts as we do currently. Uh, we are kind of the low spot there, so there's, um. From the adjoining properties, uh, there's like, there's a swale on the south side, uh, and that all. Directs downwards from the road to the lake.
It's probably been functioning like that, but maybe.
Okay. But it's.
You need to. Things up on the same footprint, so it's, you know.
But that's a question because sometimes things do change, so, so it'll be, it'll be directed to an existing swale.
Yeah, nothing will leave the property.
Okay, so the answer to seventeen, will it create stormwater discharge? And yes, as it comes off the roof, right? So I'm going to have to initial this group of things too. Will it flow to adjacent properties? Shouldn't, no.
Yeah, unless it really got down.
And will they be directed to an established conveyance system, runoff and storm drains? And I would say yes, and we'll say existing swell. Right? That's what I heard. This is always an important point because things do happen where water gets directed the wrong places.
I just wondered too, when you said the numbers. I, if we answer yes, they look for a little. Or, I wonder, maybe give something upgrades to be compliant with current energy codes. Because that's what's, um.
If.
Always going to be looking for.
If the proposed action will exceed requirements.
Or if you want to leave a blank, doesn't matter.
I assumed we were going to meet the energy code requirement. Because he says yes.
Does need or exceed. Doesn't matter.
Let's leave it blank.
I'd leave it blind.
Would you want for five, also check up water from?
Five.
I think I'm just a question.
First five or the second. Aquatic. All other land uses that occur, what would be aquatic?
Lake.
The land use, check land uses that occur on the propos, on.
Are adjoining.
Joining.
Just a question.
We'll check it, aquatic, meaning the lake, if we get the question on that.
Yep.
So we'll have, no, that's good. Anything else that anyone? Okay. So given that, we go to part two, and this is based on the answers given in part one. We have to answer this series of eleven questions. Uh, based on the answers that were given in part one, so have someone read down through these eleven and we'll check. Was it, he will or will not have an impact? Birch. Caroline? Oh, go ahead. Caroline's going to take over.
All right.
Birch normally does.
I thought I had been replaced. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No, will the proposed action result in a change in the use? Or intensity of use of land? No, will the proposed action care of the character quality of existing communities? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics, characteristics to cause the. Establishment of a critical environmental area? No, will the proposed action result? In an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Now, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities? Now, will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies or public. Wastewater treatment utilities? Now, will the proposed action impair the character or quality? Of important archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in the adverse change to natural resources? E.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Now, will the proposed action result in the increase in the potential for erosion? Flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
Thank you, Birch. So we answered no to all of those questions, so based on the answers to part two. We have to determine if this action will have a, um. Have a negative impact or no negative impact on the environment. So by motion.
Sorry, did we open the seeker review? No, we granted approval, we went back and closed it, but I don't believe we ever, I think we got.
Oh, got a little bit of our zone, yeah. Yep, I skipped that step.
Yeah.
Okay.
We ever do that?
Oh, we don't?
No.
I don't think, I don't.
No.
I, I look, okay, so one time I noticed that we did it.
Yeah.
And then I looked back in all of our meeting minutes and we never opened or closed the seeker review. So I just thought so.
It's good enough.
Precedent.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, what, what, what is the impact, whether we open it by motion or not? I'm, I'm okay either way, what do we think? Do we need to open it by motion?
I don't.
I don't think it seems necessary to, if we're going to.
All right, so we don't need to open it, so we just went into the review of the seeker document. All right, so again, based on the answers to part one and two. Do we determine this as a positive or a negative impact on the environment? So the, the motion should say. Make a motion that this will not, will, will have no negative impact on.
I'll make a motion.
Birch made that a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Caitlin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, thank you. So there's no negative impact on the environment. No significant. So at this point, we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Harry. Okay. So we have not identified any, uh, any changes to the proposed plan. The only outstanding thing, or remaining thing would be to, uh. Have the Burtskys submit a final site plan map. Prepared by an engineer or surveyor or an architect, a licensed one. Uh, what I would suggest, however, if we grant final approval of the application. On the condition that they provide that map to us. And that way, whenever they get it, they can call me directly or, and don't have to wait for a, a regular meeting if. If, uh, if it looks, if the final looks substantially equivalent to what we've approved. So that would be my recommendation that we grant final approval on that condition.
I'll make a motion, we do final approvals subject to the site plan map being approved by the chairman.
Okay.
I mean, just so they know, it's a kind of what, in sixty days?
Sixty two days, and if you have a delay, notify me and we can give you next sixty two day extension. Okay.
Need a second?
Yeah, we do need a second.
Okay, I think the, um, closed public hearing.
I made a motion.
Caitlin, Birch. So the motion is, the motion on the, on the floor is to grant final approval on the condition of the site plan map being submitted. So it's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So. You folks all set? Just get that map, uh, ready, we'll need two copies of it.
Yeah.
Two copies of it in, you know, fairly large format, so that everything is readable on it. And including all of those features that we mentioned, showing on that now. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Considerate. You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay or not, it's up to you. We have some more business.
Do you want us to initial whatever?
Oh, yes, on the seeker and on the application. If we do that before I.
Do they need a monitor copy?
Not for the site plan.
Oh.
Just need the, they do the subdivision. So one of you, either one of you want to make some initials here. Just initial on that one.
That one.
Uh, I do, on the application, on that one, not on the application. That we could, maybe. Just. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Nobody ever wants to stupid.
No, they don't.
One time that applicant said he felt like he was in the principal's office.
Yeah.
We try to make it painless, but. There are requirements. Oh, okay, so the next item of, uh, business is to, uh, review the subdivision application. Or Keith Haas for property on Curtis Road. Tax map number. So we will do this by, so we're going to open a public hearing by motion. Second.
I'll second that.
Rich, all in favor? Opposed, okay, so the public hearing. Now we will open the preliminary review by motion.
I'll make a motion.
Caitlin?
I'll second.
Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, so, okay. So, uh, Mr. Haas owns property on Curtis Road. There is no house number assigned, that's why, uh, the application, as you showed, the surveyor measured it out, seven hundred and seventy seven feet north of. Where middle road, uh, middle road turns west, Curtis Road continues, so it's, it's a vacant lot. Um. There, I did have a question, Keith, on your application, you listed an address as Birch Hill Road. But in Encore, it shows the address as a Livonia dress.
Which, my personal address? Yeah, so when I bought the property, I was living on Reed Road. We moved to Canada, back to Canada.
Okay, so Encore is the, uh.
Yeah.
Ontario County Resources mapping. But it still has your Livonia, so you have Birch Road is, Birch Hill Road is your address, okay? All right, so this is vacant land, uh, approximately twelve point nine five seven acres. And he's proposing to subdivide it. There are no building, there are no structures on it. Um. I believe there are no services, is that correct? There's no, no well or septic.
There's nothing.
Anywhere, uh.
Horses, uh, utilities come through.
There is a, there is a utility pole and that's shown here on the south. Portion of this map, the survey map. And another one in the middle.
Is there any easement over those wires? No.
No. No. Did print out a. They gave it to you, the.
At the time, it wasn't.
They give you this map?
Land when they put it in.
Yeah, what?
It was his land where they put the utilities in, he lost his taxes. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah. So I, I gave you this as well to kind of locate where the property is.
Yes.
I mean, it's black and white, mine, put it out in color, but, uh, it's on Curtis Road and if you know Wayne Coy. Uh, this is Wayne's house back here. And it's serviced by this driveway. So, uh, Keith's property is to the west of Wayne's and to the south, so this. This outlined is the outline of the existing property, and I think I did that on the survey map as well, showed you the outlines. So he's proposing two lots. Uh, lot one, according to this, is about four point three six four acres. Lot two is, uh, twelve, excuse me, lot two is, uh, eight point oh nine six acres. Um, so I've outlined on your map. Where is, he's dividing basically the hash yellow line shows you just going up the. That corner up to Curtis Road. The north part is lot one, the south part is lot two. Uh, each one of them ha, meets all of the dimensional requirements, meaning greater than three acres of land. Which is required in a rural district. And minimum of two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage, width and depth. The both lots meet those, uh, requirements. Be straightforward. Uh, it's right off the road, there are no structures, so there's no driveway required, and there are no easements, he just said some, uh. Easements don't have to be shown either. Any questions, so? Anything you'd like to add, Keith? Straightforward. Can we, uh? No questions at all? Pretty straightforward, so I guess at this point, I would just entertain a motion to grant preliminary approval to the subdivision. Make that motion. Steve Gro, is there a second?
Second.
Caitlin? Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, carry. This point, we'll move, and, uh, actually, we should have read through the application, and we'll do that at this point. He, the owner. Um, surveyor's name is here, who prepared the survey, the location, the tax map. Proposed use is residential. Current use is vacant agricultural. Current use is vacant agricultural and wooded. On the back, uh the description is to subdivide approximately thirteen acres into approximately. Four and a half and eight and a half acres. So that's the application. We can move to the seeker form. Same thing on the seeker form. Uh any questions on any of the questions run through twenty? I think we answered them all. And I think there are no issues since it's all vacant land, no issues there.
I would think that's similar to opening a seeker review. When we grant approval, I think that closes.
I think so.
I was thinking that last, last time around.
Let's go with that. Let's 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 by clo- by granting the preliminary. Here we have closed the review. We just talked about no need to open a seeker review. To to just go into it. So that's that's what we're going to do. Okay? So you can fix up the notes.
Fix up the other.
Okay. All right.
What does early mid succession mean?
Steve?
What does early mid succession?
What question number are you on?
And that's. Just on my own.
That would be ash trees and uh.
I think it's like, you know.
Yeah.
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 It's like.
Not forest.
Can I take this one?
Okay.
Yes.
It's the concept that if you clear cut a field, eventually things will start to grow back. Bushes is an early stage, then you'll get some trees that grow up. As those trees get more mature, they create a canopy that turns it into a different type of land. And it basically describes the vegetation and what stage it's at on that parcel.
Thank you.
Great description.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks.
That's exactly it. So just a regeneration.
So that's pretty subjective, right? Okay. Uh part two is is that series of eleven questions rather than read through them. Does anyone, would anyone answer anything other than no on these? Okay, with part three then, based upon all of those answers being no. Uh we need to determine that this have will have no negative impact on the environment.
Make a motions.
Okay.
No negative impact.
And a second? Caroline, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very, thank you. Let me just, I have to fill this out here. Give me a moment. Since we've not identified any uh changes to the application or the survey map as provided. Uh at this point, and this is a final survey map, all stamped signed and. Uh we reviewed it, everything is informing and everything is acceptable. So at this point, we can grant final approval, motion?
I'll make a motion to grant final.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you. So it's been approved. So now you need to go back to your surveyor. We need a a Mylar. And actually, I do have, I still have one clean copy, so. You'll need to get from him a Mylar and two paper copies. Notify me, I have to stamp and sign them as being approved. And at that point, you take them to county um. Property office. And then I'm there to the clerk's office. You have to pay a fee to to register it. So talk to your surveyor when you have those, give him a call or a planning phone or an email. And we can hook up together and I can uh stamp them and you'll be all set.
Great.
That'll be the last thing you'll have to do with the town for this, for this action.
For that session, yeah.
Okay.
Did you want any copies that we have?
Yeah.
No, I got, I got plenty.
Okay.
Yeah, he printed a bunch.
Yeah, I. I marked up the ones that you gave us on, so we can't use those, but you've got others. So but he he has to provide you with, it's a Mylar.
One Mylar, two.
Two.
Okay.
Papers, okay?
Sounds great.
All right, Keith, thanks for coming down and.
Thank you.
I think we did everything, right? Oh, yeah, dude. We've been closed a public hearing?
I'll make a.
Let's close the public hearing. Public hearing, thanks.
Second.
Caitlin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, thank you. I know, I've got my cheat sheet, but I don't look at it enough, I guess. Okay. Uh second privilege of the floor. On on your table, I did leave a copy with Darla. Darla's, McDonough, McDonald.
Oh, yeah.
McDonald. Uh was interested in joining in our our planning board. Um you may not have had a chance to read over this, but she's a long time uh. Had been a longtime employee of the Ontario County Planning Department. Several years ago, although all of that it uh. Experience can only be good. Not a lot of experience at a town level, which is okay.
Yeah, not the planning board. I was on board assessment review and the. Non zoning board of appeals before there was zoning incentivized, we had land use regulations.
Right.
Have a board of officials.
Right.
I was on that. Part of my job at the county twenty-four was to work with any municipalities. Whenever you go out, talk to towns or whatever. Issue they had, they requested the speaker about a training session that. But I've been going from the planning department for quite a while. Everything you've been talking about had a very familiar ring to it. And now I used to do seeker backwards and forwards and all of that, but I thought, no, I need a little brushing up here. And a little training, um we know the initial vocabulary.
Good.
I remember that, I remember hearing the name, I don't ever recall me to you. I I was in the planning, I just represent.
I was, yeah, I was staffed to the county planning board. That was many years ago.
Before Tom Harvey, you said, right? Okay, um. So very uh thorough background, very helpful, potentially helpful. I guess just, you know, why do you want to join us? What's your interest here?
Well, ten years since I've done anything productive. But the town, or the county, and. You know, I'm a citizen, I should do something.
Okay.
And this. I I went to the comprehensive plan meeting. I had filled out my form sent in and and I went to the meeting and I was very impressed. Yeah, it was an excellent meeting. Um and I thought, okay, I should. Eileen has been poking me.
I heard someone was twisting your arm a bit.
I thought, okay, I should, I should do.
Okay.
And I thought this meeting tonight was very well grown. Very professional.
Little confusion on the order of things.
We did a training session one time in the planning department where we set up a site plan, a subdivision. Based on, as we had, we did them and Tom was in glory. Um and uh we made everything as bad as it terribly could be. But my job was to be developer and come forward. So I said, okay, well. What would be a good developer name? Okay, it's R V G, Rick Pillage and Burn. That was our firm. Leslie Pillage. And we, so we had some new. We did show. What are running up and all the basics that you need for those. So. I think that may have helped people remember things that they should have.
I gotta say, reading. I think this board would benefit greatly.
More experience for any of us.
Yes.
Expect at least a few. I will. Sit quietly and and observe as much as participate because I want to make sure that. Uh my information is relevant. People, laws have changed, procedures change.
None of us know the book completely, so we always have to refer to it and we'll make mistakes and we go back and correct ourselves and et cetera, so. And nothing we do has that huge of an impact on anything really, right? I mean, we've been given the responsibility to approve or deny applications, so.
Does have an impact.
Well, not, yeah.
Today were small individual parcels, not too far from what exists. But there may come a day when something big rolls in their lap and.
That's why we have the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan.
According to our residents, they don't want that.
Right. Okay, so what we would do is uh. Steve has his resignation written. He just hasn't signed it. So you, this is the opening that we have for a regular member. Um we also have an opening for an alternate, but I don't see any value in you applying for the alternate position. So uh any questions for Darla's?
Wait, can you start?
What we would do is, what we will do is uh. It's all right. Um and as I, as I noted, um training opportunities are throughout the year. New York Planning Federation has learn at lunch sessions, uh online. They have a one, a full day training session. Rochester Regional Planning has full day sessions. Many opportunities to take training courses either online or in person. If there's a fee, the town pays the fee as well as transportation mileage to drive to and. Back from the location of the training. Each one of us is required to have four hours of training per year. Um if you have more than four in a given year, you can carry over the excess for one year and use it up the following year. Um and other than that, it's learning as we go. You know, go through the applications, familiar. That's how we get familiar with what's in here. By reviewing the uh the regulations and the requirements and uh. We have fun. We also kind of get, keep an eye on, keep an ear to what's going on in town. So uh what we would do is in a moment, we'll take a vote if we want to recommend to the town board. That you be appointed as a regular planning board member. They will vote on it at their, so what we'll do is uh tonight, I'm assuming we'll make that motion. And at the uh July meeting of the town board, they will approve that and then swear you in and you'll become a regular member. We will put you on the mailing list each month be uh about, about a week before a meeting. Uh maybe, maybe not a week, a few days. Sometimes it's the day of the meeting that the the thing shows up in my mailbox. Uh a package with the agenda and any uh closures. Get a chance to take a quick look at it in the meeting. And um that's it. Anything anybody wants to add?
This is a very typical agenda for us, these types of applications. Two is honestly a lot.
Yeah.
Some meetings we won't have any applications. We do still meet those.
And there is a stipend for every meeting that you attend. We got one of those forty-five dollars.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? We 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 request that payment at the end of the year rather than month to month. In November, we fill out a voucher and get a check.
We do occasionally get um assignments from the town board to look at updating pieces of code. We recently did the survey one. The RV one, I forget what that section.
Creation of vehicle, we did solar, we did the sewer, sewer updates.
That one, I feel like we'll consistently to to look at.
Yeah.
Updating, you've done that one a couple of times. We've got our timber harvest section.
Yeah, we, that's coming up. That needs to be done, the timber harvest process.
So that's just kind of another, usually like a little side committee is formed with a couple of members to look into that.
So you want a more, have a motion?
I have a motion that we. Recommend to the town board that Darla's be appointed as a replacement for the retiring.
A second dad.
Second, Rich. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, Carrie.
Do I need to attend the town board meeting?
You can if you'd like to.
I don't think I.
Second Monday of every month, seven o'clock right here in this room. So Steve, you can submit your resignation in writing.
You have to hand something over.
Yeah, you have to. You can do it by email or write it out and just say, you know, as if you want to, uh a certain date. As long as that date is before July twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry for not being able to be here in July.
It's okay.
Roll if you're coming from out state.
We understand and there there are absences throughout the year and it's fine. Okay.
Yeah.
Did we vote? We did.
We did.
Okay, anything else for privilege of the floor? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
Caitlin, all in favor?
Aye.
And once you get appointed, uh you have to be sworn in by Eileen and she'll give you a copy of our code book. Thanks for rushing to get here.
I don't think.
Yeah, she don't like the heat.
Thank you. So you can. It doesn't make sense. I should just say.
Right.
I'm gonna be out of town.
All right.
Remind, shoot you an email and remind you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad Darla said something or I would not have remembered. I'm also out of town. I would like, oh, July twenty-eight.